Good evening, everybody. And I welcome to the Dover Select Board meeting on Tuesday, October 21st, 20:45 at 6:30 PM. Let's call the meeting to order. First up, public comments. We won't see anybody. All right, moving on to additions or deletions to the agenda. Jeanette, do you have anything?
I don't. We have enough.
New business. Preliminary engineering report and a preliminary design plans for the FRCF Snow Lake Project. Brian Cole, SLR, and Alyssa Sabato with the Wyndham Regional Commission will provide a free update on the Snow Lake Project.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I'm Alyssa Sabato. I'm a senior planner with the Wyndham Regional Commission, and we have served as the project manager for, on behalf of the town, for this project. And I'm here tonight to kind of just recap it and give the final word on the town's portion of this project under the Flood Resilient Communities Fund, or FRCF grant. As the grant is ending at the end of this year, so we're, unfortunately, you know, we've, we've accomplished our tasks that we set out to do under that grant. So just to let you know a very, very brief history of how it's all come about, but the Flood Resilient Community Fund grant was awarded to Dover in 2022, and the project got underway in the fall of 2022. We hired SLR, so Brian Cody is here tonight to speak a little bit about what, where things are now with everything, but this project has always involved a strong partnership and coordination with Mount Snow, starting with Brian Sudaholz and now primarily working with Kevin Harrington of the resort, as well as their consultant, VHB. And Robert Wildy is here to speak on their behalf today and answer any questions for them. So the project goals of this whole thing that is going on here are to remove the Snow Lake Dam, which Mount Snow is now required to do as part of their newest master plan with a deadline of November 2027. And with that removal, we're also maintaining South Access Road with a bank full with culvert to keep the road there instead of the dam, and recreating the stream channel in the area that's currently the lake, and creating a stormwater management system to treat and hold stormwater before it enters the waterway. And that'll be, a portion of the current lake will be used for that stormwater system. And then at the north end, replacing and upsizing a culvert on Handle Road to reconnect the stream to its headwaters and just, it'll, it'll all be. That, that north end culvert is also needed for the full reconnection. So over the course of the design and these, these few years that we've been working, we've held two large meetings with regulators throughout to get feedback on the designs, and that feedback was incorporated. We've maintained a good working relationship with all the state regulators. The team has, did present this project publicly to Dover in November of 2024, as you hopefully recall. And the project was submitted to the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, which is through FEMA, but it was not selected by the State Project Review Committee to be forwarded to FEMA, so that road ended. It was also submitted for congressional-directed spending, and it was selected by Senator Welsh's office for that funding. However, that funding at the federal level is not seen as likely any longer. So we have advised, I have advised Mount Snow of their likely need to cover 100% of this cost at this point without finding alternative funding sources. So right now, the design is finalizing with SLR and VHB working in coordination. VHB's portion involves the stormwater system, and that's funded directly through their contract with Mount Snow, but it's being done in conjunction with SLR's portion, which is the dam removal and the stream channel remediation, because you can't have one without the other. But the FRCF portion didn't cover the stormwater. So as I said, design is still finalizing with both of those firms working closely together, and the permitting will begin this year, is what I've been told. The plan right now overall is to de-water the lake through removing the boards and the spillway in 2026, and then begin the, and, and begin and complete the construction in 2027. So that's, that's a recap of, of the whole thing. And I also do want to express appreciation for the town in putting forward this FRCF grant, allowing this work to to happen. So we, you know, it wouldn't have been possible without the town of Dover as an applicant. And so we are really appreciative of that, and we hope to continue to have a, have a good working relationship as this project continues. So I'll turn it over to Brian unless you want to have any questions now. Okay, go ahead, Brian.
Thanks, Alyssa. Hi, everyone. Yeah, my name is Brian Cody and Water Resource Engineer with SLR, working on the Snow Lake Dam Removal Project and also the Handle Road Culvert Project. Just to, again, recap what Alyssa mentioned, we've gone through preliminary design with the town under the FRCF grant, and have also recently, well, earlier this year, completed a conceptual design for the Handle Road culvert replacement. That project was funded by the Connecticut River Conservancy, who is also kind of involved with the Snow Lake Dam Removal Project, which the, the two of them are, since they're so close together and so interrelated, have been moving forward in parallel. We have been contracted or are working on contracting to finalize the design for the Handle Road culvert and catch it up to where we are on the Snow Lake Dam Removal. As Alyssa mentioned, we're wrapping up final design and preparing for permitting along with VHB in Mount Snow. So that's just a quick update, and I'm happy to answer any questions you all might have with the preliminary design, either the plans or the report that have been submitted to the town.
Questions? Joe?
I guess my question is to Alice.
Alyssa.
Alyssa, so is Vale aware that the funding isn't available anymore that they were hoping to get for this project?
Yes.
And they're committed to still take care of and do it with the amount of money it's going to cost?
Well, they, so, so far as when we were still submitting for HMGP, they had committed a bit more than half of it, and at this point, they do have a permit requirement through Act 250. So I haven't seen a commitment in writing for the entirety, but I don't, you know, that, that wouldn't have been something I would have needed to see. It's basically, we have advised them that we cannot find alternate funding from the angles that we've tried. I don't know, Robert, if you want to weigh in?
Sure, I can, I can jump in a little bit. Obviously, I can't speak entirely for Vale, but they have been an active participant in this process with Alyssa and Brian and understand that there's sort of funding demands on them to make this happen. I guess the one piece I'll just clarify is that the Handle Road culvert itself would not be the responsibility of Vale, Mount Snow, as that entirely exists on town right-of-way, whereas the dam itself is owned by Mount Snow and the land underneath Snow Lake is, is in their property. So the requirement to remove the dam, and then the restoration associated with that and the stormwater practices would all be part of their responsibility.
Me, Vicki, and maybe Travis, were we spending the money to put in the culvert? Was that part of the whole process of this? I mean, this is years now. I'm just trying to.
I thought that there was another group that wanted to come in and help us with that. They were at the meeting last year. Have we heard anything more from them? They are this, the streams people. Yes, no?
Yeah, I, I, I mean, going through all these talks, we weren't going to be on the hook, and now being told we're on the, for the culvert. So I'm a little confused about this whole thing. So I have three people that are working on this. I'd just like to be enlightened because they're in it. So anyone that wants to answer my question, we greatly appreciate it.
So I can just weigh in that I, I believe Travis is under the understanding that that is a town culvert that would be replaced with at least significant assistance, hopefully through a V-Trans grant. I know he was actively pursuing a V-Trans grant and had this as his highest priority culvert. Ron Rhodes has, has, through the Connecticut River Conservancy, has gotten the money to do the design of that culvert, and he, he actually just recently got money to finish that up. As far as the actual construction of the culvert, that is still, and my understanding that that's still a piece to be figured out. It's not, but you know, it, I know it's, it's Travis's top priority, he said. I don't know, Travis, if you, if you're there, if you can weigh in.
Yes, it, it very well was my top priority until the Blue Creek Bridge. Yeah.
So it sounds like priorities change.
We've got some, we've got some underlying issues on a very much larger structure, so I don't, I'm not sure. Well, I'll have to talk to the board at one season here.
Yep, yeah, there's a lot of, that's not cheap culvert. And I was under assumption, and maybe the board can recorrect me that most of this was going to be paid for through all this grant money, through all this, all these entities. And now I'm kind of like, we're digging up the road ourselves, we're paying for it, and we're hoping Vermont, V-Trans is gonna help us, and we have none of that.
To some extent, too, that, that, that grant's only a couple hundred thousand. That's not, that's just going to scratch the surface. It's not a 100%, you know?
Yeah, so it's a lot of tax dollars now that we have the bridge that we're, so. Thank you for all your information to see.
Yes, Patrick.
Can someone please refresh my recollection as to what's the estimated cost of our part, if you will, our potential? That's a very good question. You know, do we have, do we have an estimate for that?
No.
Brian, do you have an estimate for the, the north end culvert yet?
Yeah, so part of the conceptual design was to put together a rough cost for construction, and it was around, I believe, 900 to $1 million was the original or the initial cost opinion for that, for that structure.
Thank you, Brian. Maybe it's just me. That was not an expected cost that the town was going to incur. Nor do we have, in my opinion, $900,000 for this in two years, or expect. Maybe I'm just guy been here 12 years, maybe someone can enlighten me.
Well, I don't think, you know, in getting into this in 2022, we couldn't guarantee what funding source we would be utilizing in, you know, five years later for the construction. We knew this project needed to happen. That was, we had a, FRCF provided a mechanism to start the design, and now you know, we are, we're trying to piece together the, the puzzle of getting it constructed. And, you know, we're, we're trying to develop pieces, and those didn't happen. So now, you know, we're gonna, we're, and the town's piece is separate. So we, you know, we'll, I think with, with Travis, we'll continue to look at funding options for that culvert. I know that it was of interest to do the project together as one big construction project, instead of doing the north end culvert separately to avoid, you know, having, having the inconvenience just in, at one point in time. So at this point, I think, you know, the funding source for the culvert is still a question.
A big question. Yes, Jeanette.
Alyssa, I think one of your emails, you and Brian, you had mentioned that Ron Rhodes was looking into some culvert grants. Is that correct? Or he was going to the?
Yeah, so Ron is very good at, you know, working with towns and other organizations at finding grant money. And he is looking for grant money for the culvert. I don't have a timeline or source yet, but you know, he's found the money to put together the design and permitting so that the project could be ready to go when the town does receive funding in the future.
Travis, did you have something to say?
Yeah, I had, I don't know where Ron was getting it, but I had exchanged some emails with Ron on, on the, he did get the funding, like he said, about being able to finish the engineering and all that. He sounded, he seemed excited to me that he was in search of or had found possibly some sources, but what he has and said, yeah, but I've been within contact with Ron for weeks ago now, I guess, that relates.
So that's an active situation.
That's the latest that I have, yeah.
Thank.
But like this, this whole thing, we, in, in my opinion, we we can't do that right now. We have to focus on the Blue Creek Bridge. And I, they, they just have to match up the work. We can really miss a best situation.
Sarah, so there's no failure going on with this, with this culvert now. It strictly has to do with, it has to be larger in order to accommodate the plans at Mount Snow is being told by the state they have to do.
And let, and help that, yes, correct. Be able to have the stream bed match the plans that are being booked for.
And there, if I could just jump in, I think there, there may be an opportunity for an interim condition where the South Access Road culvert or dam has been removed, and there's a culvert in that location, so it's a free-flowing stream, and the restoration that occurs in Snow Lake is completed or mostly completed, and the Handle Road culvert could potentially be, remain in place until, you know, a future date. But it's good to have everything tied together, and the permitting, the permit sort of regulatory authorities are telling us they'd like to see everything as one comprehensive package, just so that there's not sort of incremental impacts being taken at different times. That's not to say that they can force the issue and, and make it not possible to do the work in two phases. So it's not solely that we're being told one thing for the Mount Snow project. It's that if, look at the stream system as a whole, having a continuous reach with Fish Passage and appropriate bankful channel, the ability to pass the flood flows without overtopping Handle Road, all of those components sort of come together with the removal of the dam at South Access Road, and then the sort of connection upstream under Handle Road.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm struggling with understanding the parameters of the entire project. So Mount Snow has an obligation consistent with their Act 250 permit to restore Snow Lakes to, to its pre-Snow Lake stream bed, if you will.
Correct.
Is not the replacement of the culvert kind of necessary? The, the South Access Road culvert necessary for that to happen?
So that is the culvert at the downstream end that is the controlling feature of Snow Lake. And Mount Snow is replacing that culvert. That's not the culvert that's in question, that's, because that's still, it's a town road, but it's a, it's still within the dam, and the dan, dam is owned by Mount Snow. So that culvert is being replaced by Mount Snow.
Okay.
At the upstream.
Yeah, please go ahead. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Okay, it's just at the upstream end, where the Deerfield River comes into Snow Lake underneath Handle Road, that culvert is separate and distinct from Snow Lake. It has no, it could be there with or without Snow Lake, and the replacement of that culvert is more of a size to match the sort of width of the channel and to prevent flood flows from overtopping Handle Road. The, the modeling and design that, that Brian's done demonstrates that if you get the 100-year event or the 1% chance event any given year, it can overtop, it would, the culvert is too small, and as you've seen every, many other places, I'm sure, those end up overtopping and, and coming through a different location. So when the regulators sort of look at the holistic, what all things are happening in this vicinity, they're looking at that and saying, okay, well, great that you're removing the dam, that's one of your conditions, and you're putting in a, an appropriately sized culvert at the downstream end. But they've, you know, sort of stretched the arm a little farther upstream and said, okay, let's also, while you're here, fix this. But unfortunately, it's not on the same property.
So, so when it is all one project, so why wouldn't it not be part of the same permit process and the same financial commitment from Mount Snow or whomever? I, I'm, I'm trying to understand how it becomes a town obligation, where the line is for when it becomes a town obligation.
So I think the permit process can affect multiple parties and multiple property owners. And the property owner for South Access Road and the dam, and this, the land underneath Snow Lake is in Mount Snow's ownership and responsibility.
Understand that, yes.
Handle Road and the Handle Road culvert is not. And so I, I don't know, kind of.
I, can I just jump in?
Sure.
What we want over Snow Lake is an easement. We actually, the town road of Handle Road is a town road of Handle Road. So I think there's a little distinction between the two, am I right? Because we only have an easement over Snow Lake.
South Access is an easement.
South Access is an easement, Handle Road is town property.
Town road.
My understanding, yeah.
So that's the.
That's the difference.
And the Handle Road, Town Road is the thing that the estimate says it's 900 to $1 million to do. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, that's in today's dollars. That's it, I understand. I just wanted to make sure I'm processing all of that. Okay, thank you. That, that's much more clear for me. Thank you.
Sure.
But.
Joe?
Thank you, Vicki. From my understanding, you it doesn't need to be replaced, but they would like it to be replaced, and we're responsible for it, is basically what you're saying. Correct or incorrect? To order for this project of taking out the dam, come out. I, I, I'm still fuzzy. Because I remember we talked about this, and that there was going to be money for it a couple, maybe a year ago, six months, and now we don't know. And I know it hinges together, it makes sense to do it all together, but again, it's a very large cost on our for something that, as Patrick said, is kind of part of the whole project now that everyone wants to do. This is, I'm not going to bring it up, it's sort of like our well project, okay? I'm not going to say anything that people know about, okay? So I'm a little heated right now for the three of you up there. So that's all I have to say. Not trying to be me, just trying to get an understanding of this. That's it.
Sarah? And Mount Snow fulfill their Act 250 obligation without anything happening to the Handle Road culvert?
I believe so, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good to know. Any other comments? Hearing nothing? Thank you all for coming. We appreciate the update and the explanations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we're going to move on to the SEVENS update, and I think we have three people from SEVENS here tonight?
Just two.
But we know you.
I'm glad this one was me.
So Ashna and?
Jack.
Jack.
Yes.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having us. Yeah, so let's just jump right in. We'll keep it brief. But yes, as, as you said, my name is Jack Spanierman. I'm a workforce education specialist at the Brattle Road Development Credit Corporation. And we'll explain a relationship to SEVENS in a minute, and I will lock you through.
Ashna, most of you probably know me. I'm the communications and enterprise coordinator at BDCC.
And we're both Dover residents. We're a little bit more recently Dover residents, so have been really happy to be here. So very briefly, we are here to discuss our annual municipal funding request through SEVENS. SEVENS is the Southeastern Vermont Economic Development Strategies. And SEVENS is its own nonprofit, doesn't have any staff though. The staff of BDCC is contracted to carry out the mission of SEVENS, which is all aligned by the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. So we do everything economic development. A real great way to describe what BDCC does in four buckets is community development and capacity building. So talking with towns and municipalities, I actually think Jeanette was a part of the municipal leaders network that our colleague Meg did a little bit ago, so that would be great. As well as community, or sorry, commercial real estate and, and development. And so we own, we're a commercial real estate entity, we own the Cotton Mill Brownborough, as well as the BDCC Business Park, Cotton Mill Road in Brownborough, and do business incubation out of those spaces. We also do business assistance and financing, so that fits into that business piece as well. So we're a lender. We're kind of a lender that's slightly different than a bank, and we're, you know, traditional lender, because we are not a bank. We can, we work, our fantastic business team works with businesses from, you know, idea and creation stages all the way to, you know, succession and like movement and like grow and all that good stuff. So we do a lot of great stuff. Oh, and the fourth bucket, the person, this is what I always forget about despite me working in it, is workforce development and training. So we do workforce classes for new Americans, for high school students, as well as good old-fashioned adults. And so the reason I'm here today is to talk about this SEVENS municipal funding request. We ask all 27 towns in our jurisdiction, the Wyndham Region, for $3 a person. And in Dover, that is, this year, that is $3,636, based on the population of 2,1212 people with a 2023 census, that is above, that is slightly above what you guys were very generous to fund us last year, because that was based on a slightly lower population back in 2010. We elected to not update that census data until after the Code Republic, where there's a lot of art, and I'll need to tell you all more artificially inflated residents here. So that, that resulted in a lower funding request. So I'm here to answer any questions that you may have. I also have some resources here, some annual reports, which really kind of details all, all the stuff that we do, need for better than I could do in, in, you know, five minutes or less, but so I'm happy to share those with you and answer any more questions that you may have.
I'm sorry, could you just repeat the total ask for this year?
Yes, I believe it's 3,636.
So it's about $360 more than less.
Correct, yep. Yep, $3 a person.
Well, I don't, are you aware of how we do this? We act, we take the ask and we put it on in the budget, and it's voted on and told you by, by the voters.
Yeah, we will be there. Then again, after any questions that you might be.
Perfect. That's exactly what people like to see people from SEVENS show up, because they feel that if they have anything to say, you know, saying it to us is one thing, saying it to people who are involved.
We try to be present.
Yeah, you've seen me go the past few years, this year, Jack's coming with me, so.
Right, we usually go to the town in which we reside.
Yeah.
So now I'm here.
So we will put that on as a warrant article. You bored good with that?
Move a little bit. I asked just one request. Can I just have a copy of one of your leaf pads? I asked just one request. Can I just have a copy of one of your leaf pads?
Would you like some of the annual? The annual course. If I, I brought, I brought all for each year as well. I only need some resources. I also, oh, the one thing I'd be remiss not to mention. Um, we also this year are asking select for us to fill out a very brief survey. Can we go along? Can we understand your priorities? Um, and we can align our, our priorities as well.
So is this supposed to be on behalf of the whole board? Or should we do anything individually?
So you can either do one on behalf of the whole board or if all of you want to do your own, it's entirely up to you. Uh, and we have copies.
Yeah, yeah, we have our copy. I think we'll leave this email to everyone.
Yes, it was. But that was my, that was a question and then I forgot to. Ask about it.
That was totally.
Um, because I, I, in some ways, I think it's, some of the questions are individualized. And so I think that it really took them from everybody. So I would encourage the board to do that. Great.
Right.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. They're fresh off the press.
Drive bar.
Yeah. Oh, well, sure, sure, Gilson's.
They're still warm.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right. Now we are going to consider the Wordsboro Pathfinders landowner permission form. Mister. This is something that we normally sign as far as I am aware.
We have a lot of powerful Peter Trail.
And. Where exactly is this piece of trail?
It's over the, uh, junction of the halfway trail.
Okay, up, up there, okay. Wait, okay. So this would. Yes. So it's a, there's a line, we could all put our, do you want one signature on this?
I think one, you know.
All right. So I make a motion that we authorize the chair to sign the landowner permission form for. The Wordsboro Pathfinders.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor. Jeanette, do we want to keep a copy of this that's signed?
Yes.
Yes. Uh, we want one. But we, we should probably copy this one.
Yeah.
That has a sig- that has the signatures on it.
Mm-hmm.
They say it's gonna be a good year. Cause I hope so. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. That was where. So now we need to consider dates for budget meetings. We have meetings with all the department heads. Uh, they are, they are, should be worth, when we get the, the dates, should be working towards building their. Their, what they see as their budgets. Then we come together and, and discuss it again. Um, and finalize some of that. And then we do capital. Building, capital equipment, capital paving, and maybe we'll have a capital, ask for a capital budget. Um. And I'm sorry, bridge. At time meeting, bridge repair. Sounds like it could be something that we need to do. So the first thing we need to do is meet with the department heads. Well, you know, anybody can come. It's a public meeting, but generally we have slots for the, the department heads.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. So usually we start in November. When did we start?
Um, last year it was November fourteenth that you met at two o'clock on a Thursday. With department heads and then um. The second one was December twelfth. Do capital one, general budget review. And then by early January, um. We had the town meeting morning and approving the budgets.
So what does everybody's second week in November look like?
I can, I can do Zoom for that. If physically going, um, wide open.
I can do the fourteen.
Is that Friday this year?
Yeah.
It's Friday, yeah.
Friday the fourteenth. Joe?
I should be on a train from L A to Chicago. So it won't be available at all. I can try, but it won't soon be.
When, when is that trip? What are the dates?
I won't be back. I'm gone from the. Seventh till probably eighteenth or nineteenth, I'm thought of.
Yeah.
I'll miss it. I'm sorry.
How about, hmm?
I mean, would it be unreasonable to do it on the twentieth? For that, or is that?
Which day of the week is that?
That's the Thursday.
November twentieth. It's the week, it's the.
The week before Saturday.
Thanks, Terry.
I think that's reasonable date. In the afternoon? Nice try. It has to be in the afternoon, yeah.
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah, like so, uh, one.
What day?
Thursday, the. Twenty of November.
Yeah.
At one.
One P M.
Okay, that's the first one.
And they usually last like two hours.
Yeah. So it gives the department heads about a month to start really thinking about it.
Well, which was up in here.
Is that good for you, Mike? How about your travel?
What day?
November twentieth. It's a Thursday afternoon.
Yes.
Um, at one o'clock. And uh, it's give you enough time to try to pull your. And.
Kind of hold down.
No, we need right here.
Fine, yes.
Okay. And then the second one, can you refresh me what they, that one's last time?
It was about a month later, so December twelfth it was.
Some late December.
December eighteenth.
December eighteenth.
We kept some four weeks.
December eighteenth would be.
First day.
Yeah, yeah. There, Thursday at one also. And. At that point is when we decided to do some, if we're close, you know, the finalization of the budget.
Could you decide on something in December?
Yeah, the eighteenth.
Not that quick to play one for. December what?
Eighteenth at one. It's a Thursday. You're not gonna tell me what we're talking about in business, but. That's not gonna be your problem.
I'm not gonna put that on.
What was the second one? December eighteenth at one P M.
Yeah.
Okay.
I am, uh.
Last time it was two to five.
I may have a bustler.
Well, we'll come, come to that. Bridge when we hit, yeah. Across it. All right, is that, is that, are you happy with the two meetings there, Jeanette? Or should we want a third one already?
No, that's fine. I think actual, the, the. The one in January was during a regular.
Yeah.
Meeting, so.
Right.
Okay, good.
One P M, but day.
Yep. Okay, moving on to unfinished business. We have the twenty twenty-six health insurance discussion and possible decision. Thank you. Uh, so. Anybody have any updates or anything? Jeanette?
Um, I think I sent you some information. I did reach out to V L C T. As far as what we were discussing about um. Analyzing our plans, et cetera, our benefits. And Kelly Avery. Pointed me to a group called Apprisure, which um is a broker partner with V L C T. They do offer this type of service to evaluate. You know, our, our benefit packages. They can do a one-time service for four hundred and fifty dollars um. Which would be available between now and January first. Um, or I guess what they prefer to do is a contractual agreement for a full year. Where they would analyze e- everything um over a one year period. Um, that would cost them about forty-one hundred dollars. To do that. Perhaps. To consider that or. The future, um. I would suggest if at all possible, we can approve the plan that we currently have. For twenty twenty-six. Um, and perhaps. Give more analysis going into the next.
Sarah. I'm a little unclear. Why, why? They would want a year contract? Do, do they analyze it? On a rolling basis, or is it just that they want to do a deep dot? I'm not sure why we couldn't just do a one and dot.
Uh, let's see. I, I, she agreed to um. That perhaps meeting, having a brief discovery meeting, just to hash this out, but um. Uh, said our partnership is designed to support you throughout the planned year. The things such as compliance updates, form filing, as well as any issues members may have as they use. Use the plans, enrollment claims, et cetera. Um, if you would like just an analysis for the coming planned year, twenty twenty-six, that's the one-time service of four fifty. Um. And then the other side, it's basically they would, they would see us through a whole year, almost like a broker would see us through a whole year. Um. But honestly, I, I do a lot of that some, so. Uh, that we need to pay somebody else to do.
Patrick?
Yeah, you, you actually have, haven't worked for a broker in hour, or you just do this directly with me? We asked you that. You're it, okay?
Oh. History, uh, excuse me. History wise. There was a broker that would sell the plans and they would make a commission so that they could help you. During the Obama whatever care act, they basically took that out. The only way you can get help from a broker. Is you, it's not built into commissions anymore. You have to hire them to help you. Yeah, so that is kind of what. But Jeanette, we're, we don't have any problem with the plan itself, how it's administered, how the people are getting paid. They would help make sure that that goes well, that what she's talking about, the fifteen dollars a person per month. Right? We have unique, as I was at the last meeting, we have a unique way that we do our healthcare. So the fact that we have the silver plan and we do a lot of our. Payments out of the H R A account as opposed to doing a gold or platinum plan. We do a little bit more self-insuring as a town. So with that in mind, the analysis is. Taking the H R A. And this is over the last couple of years. You know, we have the numbers and it won't take that much to. It's getting the numbers, computing and making sure we're on the right plan. I'm not saying. That we're not on the right plan, but it could be that maybe we should go to the gold plan. Maybe we should go to the brown spot. But until we have a number analysis to understand that from that side of things. And we, we kind of, way we're doing it from our understanding and my understanding, we are saving the town money. Because of the utilization of the H R A. So as I brought up last week, and I think the four hundred, five hundred dollar thing could be helpful. Because maybe they'll give us. An understanding, us, I say as the staff. But concern if we did make a change. Making changes here, not probably a good idea. Totally. It'll take a little time to digest those numbers, but also we should be looking at. All the other different plans, like we, you know, offer dental insurance. We don't offer, but employees pay dental. We, we have life insurance. We have different things that Jeanette's been. Yeah, Jeanette's been doing a great job. But it, it's just like ourselves, you know, every once in a while you have to relook at your insurances. You can't just keep doing everything. So that is why I brought up. The, I have an individual that can do it. She watched the meeting. And she, you know, she's been consulting with me personally, not that I don't want to bring up her name or anything like that. Um, after talking to her and everything. With the increase of four percent. It's not bad this year, you know, just talking to her. And she's willing to do that. But she says right now it's not the time, you know, at the meeting. Type thing, it'd be better to do in January. She'd love to do it. She's, she's willing to do it type thing and, and get to a meeting in January and do that analysis for us. At, like I told you, the twelve to fifteen hundred dollars. And do a good analysis so that she can explain it because she works in the business. So that's where we're at. We're not trying to, you know, I just want to make sure we're doing the right thing. I don't, I can learn it and spend forty hours on it. But I'm no longer supposed to. Be honest with you.
Yes, Sarah. Is there, could we get? Some sort of a comparative of the services that are going to cost four fifty to the services that cost twelve hundred? Cause it sounds like this is going to be more comprehensive. Or should be for that amount of money. And is that difference? Enough of a value that it makes sense to spend the higher amount? And we wouldn't really know that unless we look at. A versus B.
Yes, Joe.
And Dan after that.
I have. Obviously a look, not, I have more, I'm not gonna say if I'm more knowledgeable in this, obviously. Was in this business at one time. I have no problem if Jeanette. Has someone that she's contacted. Have you talked to this or is this all email? Of, did you talk to the person who was gonna do the four hundred and seventy-five dollar?
No, I haven't yet. I haven't pursued it because I didn't know what.
So the next step would be, I assume whoever that individual is or company, I have no. Quom, if Jeanette doesn't mind that we could be on the same conversation and see what it is so that I could explain it. And Jeanette can understand it and I can understand it. Cause I, I don't know really what they're gonna do for that. I don't, I really know what they're gonna, I know what I was trying to do. And yes, it takes some time. To put the nu- not, it doesn't, it's more getting the numbers from this side and that side and. Just spending a little bit of time.
Dan?
Maybe we should do both, so we have a comparison. We're talking about two thousand dollars compared to. What do we pay? Seventy, eighty thousand dollars, you know, a tremendous amount of money for this. Do both.
Our annual.
Oh, it's, it's more than that.
Yeah. Yes, Patrick.
It's a lot of. I, I, I think I'd like to suggest a different path. Uh, cause I see, we're looking at a four percent increase this year, which if, after you take away inflation, it's almost nothing.
Right.
Given what's going on in the insurance market. It would have to be really compelling to change right now, right now.
Right.
Um. I'm not opposed. I, I think as I said last time, I, I think it's an interesting idea to take a look at these things. I agree with you, Joe, that periodically. You gotta come and get somebody to take a look and say, hey, that's not just me. Um. But, but. I, 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 Jeanette, I think you're our point person on this. If you had. Joe's contact and the person you spoke with, that you talked to them, they said, hey. We can get this done for you and there's a proposal that, that they can give you, that we can get this done for you by the end of the year before we have to, yeah, great. And the answer is, and it, it, it would have to be, as I said, it'd have to be compelling. Cause in my mind, I can't see a justification for it this year. What I feel like is if we want to come back and, and have that discussion. In twenty twenty-six for the twenty twenty-seven year, with plenty of time to let us think about it, that makes a lot of sense potentially. Given how small the increase is this year. So that's, that's where my head is. That was where I would be inclined. Let's not, it's really late to be kind of trying to jump through that just to me. So I hope that makes sense.
I have one question. I don't, I, not easy for me to see how much the H R A contribution, I mean, how much more we. That would have to be for the plans. Cause they always monkey around with that too.
They do. That's why this whole, this whole analysis that they say so. The, no, the whole analysis is because of the H R A, the percentage is always constantly changing. So we, we did, and Vicky was on the board with, when, when Randy was here, we did the analysis. And it made good sense seven, eight years ago. So we need to really look at and make sure we're on the. The right plan, because the H R numbers got up, percentages have changed to how much they pay. I, I mean, I. I know my wife's on Blue Cross Blue Shield and I see this stuff come through and. This isn't covered, that's not covered. This, you know, we pay this, but I'm like, I'm, I'm more like, they don't pay any. But I know that we've done well, experiential by what the cost of premiums are to the next plan, to what we spend for H R. I've kept tracking them.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I don't know if Marco is, got a good understanding, and I don't say, I, I think we're still doing well if we took the premium dollars to the H R A dollars. You know, ourselves, I think we've done okay. Maybe, maybe Mark would say.
Yeah, so.
Yes.
So we, we budget typically fifty percent of what the H R A outlay, the maximum outlay would be, and generally we, we commit about sixty to seventy percent of what we budget, so we're, I think the H R A has been been working in the town's favor of that.
And I've found the incorrect numbers now, so. This one right here, right?
Yes, 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 so the out-of-pocket obviously has, has gone up, so that has changed, obviously the monthly premium is is more, um, if you keep the employee contributions, um, it would be ten, ten thousand three hundred for singles, twenty thousand six hundred for all others for the H R A. Right now, I believe the the larger amount is eighteen six, so it's a two thousand dollar. And I believe the other one is nine thousand three hundred for the single plan right now, so it would be a thousand dollars.
So they went up some, not. Yeah. So. Yes, Joe.
I, I can tell you that over the next year, they ask for a lot more money. And it's, they're gonna have to cut things, Blue Cross Blue Shield. It's gonna be a hurt of a year. And then next year, we're, I, if we don't get an increase, I, I don't know how they can keep operating, or they may just go and shop.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's, you, it is, it's, that's why I want to do this, so that we're ready for the inevitable, what's the best for the employees and for the debt. In a nutshell. For the inevitable coming up for next year.
Any comments? Yes, only?
I would definitely be curious about a deliverables list, about what analysis they're delivering, because I, I agree, like Jeanette being the point person, having someone sit with her all year to make sure that they're filling out proper papers and we make that easier as well. We got that covered in the first line of town, but it would be curious to see the deliverables and how they're doing, I mean, actuaries are crunching numbers on this all the time. So it would be, I think a beneficial analysis, not only is a recipient, and this year extremely grateful to be in all the benefits, um, but making sure that the town is, is balancing that, and it's been balanced very well so far, it seems like. But it certainly makes sense to try to get, you know, are they manipulating it so somehow bronze plans, I'm just, you know, playing, cause I would get floated to the top suddenly, when you do, when you compare it properly, so not apples to oranges, oranges to oranges, and that would be the analysis and the deliverables that I think would be beneficial, and understanding that list from different people would be great. So that's a good beneficial for everybody.
Jeanette?
Yes, I agree, um, I just in my mind, if we can just move forward with the twenty twenty six plan as we have been, and then look at this and have a year to analyze this in a proper way to make a good decision going forward.
Did you happen to take out the motion?
Okay, so. I make a motion that we fund the employee healthcare plan for the twenty twenty six, twenty seven fiscal year with the Blue Cross Blue Shield Standard Silver Reflective Plan. Premiums in the amount of nine hundred eighty dollars eighty cents per month for single plans, one thousand nine hundred sixty one dollars sixty cents per month for a two-person plan, one thousand eight hundred ninety-two dollars ninety-four cents per month for adult and children plans. And two thousand seven hundred fifty-six dollars five cents per month for family plans. With the H R A funding in the amount of ten thousand three hundred dollars for singles, twenty thousand six hundred dollar for all others, while leaving out-of-pocket maximums at one thousand five hundred for singles and three thousand for all others, H R A to pay first.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
All right. Thank you.
You want this back, Jeanette?
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Ah, okay, so the Blue Book Bridge has been repaired and we're gonna discuss where that money's gonna come from tonight, cause we have the bill. And it came in right on, right on. So, um, Marco, any ideas where, where this money could come from?
Shake the money tree.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think for now, it, we, it just, we make up an expense line item and code it to that expense line item within the highway budget, not capital.
It's gonna look like, uh, tracks of budgets gonna be busted.
You don't, yeah, you know.
We, we can put a footnote on that too as well, this was, we had no idea.
Emergencies happen, it's, uh.
Right.
So it's. We put a total on it?
So. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, Sarah.
Wait for Vicky to call.
No worries.
So what is the rationale for it coming from the highway versus like capital paving or just, just picking, uh.
Just. I don't, it doesn't really matter.
Okay.
I don't think from, the money has to come from somewhere, but, um, if for capital, you may, it may be at the expense of something else.
Mm-hmm, yes. Joe?
So. Last year, how much extra did we have left over in the budget last year?
So we had, we had a surplus, a good surplus, a couple hundred thousand, okay, so.
So why can't we take it? I know you gotta kick it from somewhere. But why can't we earmark it if we're over budget to that month this year? I would prefer to use the money in this year's if we have the money left over as opposed to doing what we've been doing in the past.
So that just, that money just carried over on.
Yeah. In the, uh, in the, uh, fund balance.
Yeah, so we were over and this will pay, this will pay about half of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so it's just gonna come out of that excess.
I'd rather not come out of his hand, buddy, cause it wasn't expected, I don't, that's.
It's gonna get coded to something.
I know.
Yes, so be coded to his budget and then the surplus would be drawn, that amount would be drawn out of the surplus into his budget to cover.
Yes.
Okay.
And, and I think that we, there's an explanation as to why this is so much, and I, I don't think, I don't think anybody's gonna when, when they hear it, hold you responsible, how would you know?
Right.
Yeah, try.
We needed the bridge repaired.
Okay.
We made the decision, we got it done. That's it. Typically, when you, when these kinds of expenses, whether it was Bobby or Travis, it's like, oh, I think we're gonna have to replace that, that bridge in a year or two, so we would, he would bump, he would include that in his in his operating budget, whereas this just was sprung on.
Right.
Me, here, so, yeah.
So. Does somebody want to make a motion, sir, can you do that?
I guess, so I make a motion that the Blue Brook or Bridge number fourteen repairs on Ludbrook Road be paid for out of the highway budget with the understanding that it is being covered by the surplus.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor?
All right.
Do you need this back to the, was invoice, was this a copy?
Give it to Marco, you gotta pay him.
Marco's already. Okay. Okay, thank you, um, and honestly, Travis, we, I, I think it's an easy explanation if they're all an issue, so. Moving on to consent agenda, we need to remove, approve the minutes of October seventh, twenty twenty five.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of October seventh, twenty twenty five.
Okay.
Any changes, corrections? All favor?
All right.
We have to approve the warrants of October eleventh, twenty twenty five.
I make a motion to approve the warrants of October eleventh, twenty twenty five for four hundred twenty-six thousand one hundred two dollars and thirty-three cents.
Second.
Any questions about the warrants? All in favor? F Y I Dover Water Task Force, October twenty second at five P M, that is tomorrow night at the firehouse.
With.
The R B hearings, October, yes.
Can I just ask, what's the big agenda?
This, we're just getting an update tomorrow from the engineer on the status of, of the preliminary study. These buildings, so. That's the big agenda, I, preliminary, not of, I, I mean, this is the feasibility study, we're not even in the preliminary engineering. Preliminary, preliminary.
Wondering if I can.
You can zoom.
You can zoom.
You can always one.
Always one gonna come, no, you don't serve food.
Okay.
Who would help me come?
Uh, the D R B hearings on October twenty-third at seven P M, that's the next next. And public meeting for the zoning bylaw update on October twenty-seventh at six thirty P M at the Dover Town Hall, I will not be there, I will be in India. So.
We're fine.
Be that liaison reports. Uh, we're gonna go into executive session for personnel under the highway department. So thank you all for coming.
Okay.
Do we have to?